He's up there, right? She's on Zoom.
She's on Zoom.
Julie.
Yeah. Guys ready? Okay. Good evening. I apologize for the delay. Our meeting went a little bit long. I'm going to ask you to join me for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please rise. Now, the pledge. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Up first on our agenda, we have a hearing for 2532 Marietta Avenue. This is a continuation of the rezoning hearing from low density residential to medium density residential consideration of ordinance 2022-11. This page.
Okay. So this, excuse me, is a continuation of a hearing that began on June 1st. I believe the petitioner is here with some additional information for the board to consider. The board would then have an opportunity to ask questions. Once you're done with your questions, you should open it up to the public to take any questions that they have of the applicant or any comments on the petition.
Okay.
Good evening. Riley Notzall with Farley Snyder. I have with me Don Herman with Marietta LLC and Mike Hucksta with the LA Group. We were before you last month with presenting this proposed rezoning from low density to medium density residential for this property 2532 Marietta Avenue. Following that discussion we took from the board that there may have been a concern about, you know, what type of housing may go in there. So we did impose a declaration of restrictive covenant against the property consistent to, you know, what we've seen in other properties here in the township. And it restricts the property to no more than 16 dwelling units and prohibits multifamily dwelling units on the property. We feel that that would keep it consistent to what, you know, the board's concerns were related to density and types of housing, while also allowing the property to be used to its fullest potential. So that's been recorded. I have copies if you'd like to see it.
Any questions from the board on this?
No, just appreciate that that occurred.
Thank you. Okay. Did you have anything else?
No, not other than what we presented last time.
Is there anybody from the public that would have a question or would like to comment on this, in this hearing? Okay. Hearing none? Should we take a motion to close the hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion to close the hearing made by Mr. Russell is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor of closing the hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. I guess it would be, we have an option to make a decision on this.
Correct. You do have a draft ordinance for your consideration.
So what's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I'm ready to, I'm ready to, to vote on this project. I think the applicants provided us with what we've been looking for in terms of an accommodation. And we're agreeable to it. I think we should move, move forward.
Okay. Okay. So do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance 2022-11, rezoning 2532 Marietta, Marietta Avenue from low density residential to medium density residential? Motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. LaFever. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Up next, we have our consent agenda. These are routine items. Are there any comments or discussion on the consent agenda from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have two comments. One relates to 791 Stony Battery Road. And as often the case, I'm disappointed in the lack of progress made toward the reduction of the escrow. And I, I would like if the township would formally address the developer of that site, the responsible party, with a statement of disappointment to this effect. I see no reason for these things to drag on as they do. And I, we've had a good relationship with the development of that project. And I just find it disappointing that we don't have that kind of action response from, from those folks. The second item I have a concern is the Dairy Road Warehouse, where they have increased a bituminous paving area that was not on the plans. And the engineer has not made a statement. So I believe that must still allow the impervious coverage restrictions that we have for the township. Is that true?
I believe the comment we made was we, we asked them to come back and address it to show how it is still in compliance, either with the stormwater or with the zoning. So the next submission would, that they make would, would hopefully show that it's still okay, or if they have to make any modifications to accommodate it.
As, as, as modification to the extent of possibly removing it.
There's, there's many options of how to address it, yes.
Okay. Again, it's, it's, from my experience, to make a mistake like that is questionable. So that's all I have on consent. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Anything else? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Weaver, second from Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention.
One abstention. Motion carries four, zero, one. Okay. Up next, Lancaster Plumbing and Heating Waiver Preliminary Plan.
Joel Young. Just on. Do associates? Happy to be here tonight. I'm here with Larry Prescott from Professional Design and Construction. And we are here for the Lancaster Plumbing and Heating Sketch Plan. We submit this sketch plan with the purpose to get feedback from the township on the expansion of the facility. Little background information, Lancaster Plumbing and Heating has been a successful business in your township for a number of years. At this point, they're looking to expand their facilities on their current site, which is located at 1184 Enterprise Road. It is in an enterprise zone. It's permitted use in that zone. And the current building is around, I don't know if you can sketch up or not. I'm not sure if that was available or not, but I'll kind of walk through it. It's current building by 9100 square feet. They're looking to add another 2,610 square feet to the building out the, just out the back of the building currently. In addition to that, they're looking to add 5,400 square feet of impervious paving around the building to add additional parking and additional circulation around the back of the building. Pretty straight, straightforward plan from that standpoint. The original purpose for submitting the plan predominantly was to request a modification of preliminary plan to go directly to final. We, in our opinion, feel solid about that based on the fact that we're not changing any property lines. It's a one-phase development. It's a pretty straightforward development overall. And we feel confident we could submit the information that township needs to address the plans and move through the process without having a separate submission. So we're requesting that of your guidance on that as far as the modification. Also on the plan, though, through the process, we did receive a review letter from township engineer, and it brought up a couple other items that we'd like to also discuss tonight. Now that we have the plan up, I'll just quickly walk through what I was referring to. You can see the existing building here is the 90, a little over 9,000 square foot building, which is held on Enterprise Road. The expansion would be just extending right out the outside of the existing building and sort of the, along the same footprint, but directly south. And then existing parking runs along the east side of the building. We'd be extending it to the south, engine wrapping a little bit around the back on that end. So that's, that's really the plan. I think it's very complex with it. A couple of items that were addressed or discussed with township staff and engineer was, was regarding frontage improvements. I'm currently, the plan doesn't show any frontage improvements right now. It's staying consistent with its neighbors to the east and the west as far as there's no curb out there. We're just having access off the macadam. We understand the township's interest generally to have improvements done on the frontage. And the request would be getting clarification on whether a deferral that might be entertained and the fact that knowing our neighbors to the east and the west do not have curb and sidewalk, but may in the future, at such times the township does move forward with those plans, that it would be installed at that time. So it's kind of our quest on one one is to get clarification on that modification to if that would be able to be entertained during the land development process. If I should, I don't know if I should run through a few of the other modifications or if there's any questions at this time. I didn't want to kind of go too far ahead here. I could kind of run through a couple of other questions we had too, but.
Do we have any questions or comments so far?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. The other.
Did you, Mr. Bennett?
Oh, yes. Would you restate the amount of paved area?
It's around, the new pavement would be around 5,400 square feet.
The new paving would be.
The new paving would be.
Okay. Everything all in? Okay. Thank you.
The other question really goes to the parking and parking islands. The, as part of this plan, we have, the current plan is 26 parking spaces. As part of this, we're adding 15 new. We're also looking to try to make as efficient as possible the current striping on the plan, which my. From this area, many of those parking stalls are wider than really necessary or to your ordinance, wider than they need to be. So we're looking to also restripe to make it more efficient to gain some additional parking. So our total new parking would be 44 spaces with the new parking, which is 15 spaces plus the restripped existing macadam. But during that process of extending this parking to the south, we go over the 130-foot sort of minimum or maximum length of parking area that would require normally a parking island to be added. With the client's intent of trying to maximize parking, then the other question would be, knowing that there's a requirement for landscaping in that island, would it be something where we could take that landscaping out elsewhere on the site, say near the front area? Or another area around the islands out here? And continue with just the parking without an interrupted island between there? Again, to maximize and make our parking as efficient as possible because they do have a need for parking with their expansion. The last one has to do with buffer requirements that you have in the township. We fully intend to comply with buffer along the back of the building. However, along the, they're currently along the east and the west for the parking and for the back of the building. It's just grass right now. And again, the neighbors on both sides are in the same condition, sort of an industrial area with grass in those areas. Request would be based on the, on the west here, since we're in a narrow area at this location, and knowing that we do need to have swale and stormwater facilities in there. If we could avoid having buffer planting in that area. And then on the east, there's actually existing swale that runs along here, which if our planting goes in, it would be in parts, portions of that easement. So knowing that the neighbors have sort of a similar condition that we do, basically lawn up to the edge of the property, and they're a situation, we're asking to kind of maintain the condition. So we're able to have stormwater facilities encumbered on both sides, but also have the buffer along the south. So I ran through a lot of stuff right there. I apologize. So I kind of leave it open. I don't know Scott, if there's anything else that you want to bring up or Diane or anybody else.
Mr. Hand. Sure, I can give a little feedback on the, the buffer request. The way that, the way that's set up is, it's required by the zoning ordinance, and it's sort of dictated technically by the subdivision ordinance. So you have the possibility to come in and sort of request relief of the technical aspects and propose an alternative. So short of going to the zoning hearing board and getting relief of doing the buffer, what we've seen is the applicant proposed something, an alternative to whatever type you, I don't remember if it's a B or C or whatever type it is, proposed something as an alternative. And then typically, the board's able to approve that as an alternative landscape buffer measure. So it would still be some plantings, and I understand you have some stormwater improvements there, but if you can work something in, then at least it allows you to be in compliance with, with the ordinance still. We've done something similar to that on, on other projects. As far as the, the island, the one island that you'd be required because of the length and number of spaces that you have. On a, on another project very recently, we did something similar to what you said, where that, that tree was planted somewhere else. So it was a modification of that requirement instead of sort of a waiver that you're still planting the tree, you're just putting it at a different, at a different location. And we're able to work with the applicant on, on that. I know sometimes maintenance wise, and like you said, just the sheer number of spaces are trying to squeeze onto a small lot. There's, there's some reasons to work with the applicants there.
Appreciate that.
And we, we have been doing deferrals where there aren't curb and sidewalk adjacent, unless the board foresees something coming in the very near future. But typically, it's probably would fall into a deferral situation for the frontage improvements.
And we'd be fine with that. And to your first question about the buffer, that's, that's a good point. We'll take that back and see what we could do to find a proposal to, to bring forth to the township.
So can we, I guess you had several questions there. So can, do we, can we go through to make sure that we've gotten them all?
Absolutely.
So.
Want me to run through them?
One at a time.
One at a time. The frontage improvements, which would be the curb and sidewalk at the entry to the facility, which would be in this location here. Mr. Hand said, and our, our request would be to basically defer that until such time that the improvements happen to Enterprise Road, and then it would come in place at that time. So we were looking for a deferral of that.
Okay. And the answer was that is common practice, and we've done that before. So.
Yes. So. The other would be the buffer planting, not along the south. We fully intend to comply to the buffer plant to the south. But the request is, is to look for some alternative means of doing some kind of buffer situation, east or west, due mainly to the constraints of the site and some of the stormwater facilities that are either existing on the east side or would be proposed on the west side because of the expansion.
Okay.
And so we'll, we'll, we'll look at that internally and come back with some alternatives to see if that can work. And we'll work with the township staff on that to see, you know, what we can come up with.
Okay.
The parking island, which would be, we have an extension of parking that sees 130 feet along this eastern end with the expansion. And the request that we have as far as modifications to take the, the one planting island that would normally be somewhere in the center here, if my, there we go. And actually, continue with the parking as needed, and then take that planting, perhaps put it up near the, the entry, some location, the entry islands or somewhere near the front of the building. Just basically taking that landscape and moving it to a different portion of the site. And then the other is, I think, the modification or waiver of preliminary plan.
We were in agreement with their request for the waiver of preliminary plan.
So to your three questions, I think the first one was the deferral is common, right? And you're going to come back with alternatives on the other two?
Yes.
Is more comfortable with that?
Yes, on those three.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
That's it. Okay. Let's see, you have any questions?
I, I have a concern on this project. I've known Lancaster Plumbing and Heating for many years. Fine firm. I feel this project, as I reviewed it, has too many issues. The answer was given as far as the paving to Mr. Bennett, but is it still within the 70% impervious?
It is.
It is.
Yes.
The one thing that caught my attention particularly in reviewing this was a restriction on outside storage. I know of no plumbing heating company that can exist without outside storage. And I just have a concern that for this size property, we get into issues down the road that we don't want to be into. I think whether preliminary plan would, would solve that or not, which is the question before us, I don't know. I just would not like to see the applicant go through something here that is marginal and really doesn't serve him in time and present some, an issue down the road. That's my concern.
I understand your concern on that. I think one thing that we looked at is that internal expansion of the building is helping for them internally to solve some of the issues of space that they need. And a lot of the parking or the expansion of the macadam, obviously, is going to accommodate the circulation for additional parking. So very little that background is, is, it really isn't planned for storage necessarily. It's more for circulation purposes. But it's a good point that you say, I know that there's often a need for that type of storage, and we can take that back to the applicant to make sure the township recognizes that's, that's a concern they have to be aware of.
Doesn't the zoning allow that? Isn't zoning item one, talk about contractor business and storage that may or may not include outdoor storage? So would that not be allowed by, right?
I think we were asking them if. We were asking them to clarify if they were proposing anything like that.
That, to me, implied that it was allowed, that it could be used for outdoor storage.
And I think it may depend on the particular use. So I think we were looking for some clarification as they move forward. They weren't showing any, but we were just asking that question to, similar to what Mr. LaFever did. So that can be clarified during the final. We can clarify that for you. Township understands the intent of the.
And just to clarify again, on, on the paving, we're going to be at 5,400 square feet. Where are we now?
I don't have the calculation now, but I would say it's probably a, for paving, probably 12,000 or 13,000 square feet roughly for the existing paving.
Say again? I'm sorry.
Well, I don't have a calculation exactly.
You're about 12 now?
12-ish, yes.
And, and we'll be at, then we'll be at 17.
Somewhere in that range.
Okay, gotcha. And you are proposing additional stormwater facilities on this project, correct?
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay.
Our intent for that with the stormwater would be to do an underground facility in the parking, the new parking area in this location here to accommodate the, the additional impervious that we're, we're creating, both with the building and with the parking. Regarding the calculation, I don't have the exact for the.
Okay. Your closest is good enough.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Nope.
Anything from the audience? So hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the waiver of preliminary plan for Lancaster Plumbing and Heating Project Township File 22-10.01, subject to all staff and engineering comments, and the payment of the preliminary plan application fee?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Russell, is there a second? Second from the chair. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So I would just also like to add that it's good to see Lancaster County businesses expanding. And we're grateful for that. Thank you.
It's a good thing. Thank you for your time.
Brookside Phase Five.
Good evening. I'm Claudia Shank from McNeese Wallace and Nurik, and I'm here this evening on behalf of 2701 State Road LLC. I'm joined this evening by Eric Scott on behalf of the developer, as well as by Joel Young, who's doing double duty here this evening. We're before the board, seeking your approval of the plan for the development of Phase Five of Brookside Development. And this is the apartment component of that phase, conditioned upon, of course, satisfaction of all outstanding staff and engineer comments. The board, I think, is familiar, very familiar with this project and this plan. This plan depicts the construction of 150 multifamily dwelling units north of Harrisburg Pike on the eastern Brookside track. The property is owned campus. Recently, the board approved a text amendment that allowed for these apartment buildings, or this apartment building rather, to be 60 feet tall, which is what's proposed on the plan. We are in receipt of David Miller Associates Review Letter dated July 6, 2022, which is a very clean letter, and think we can work through any remaining comments. So with that, by way of background, I'm going to have Mr. Young come back up and talk through the plan and the waiver requests that are before the board.
Thank you, Claudia. Hello again. I don't know if we might be able to have the safe plan pulled up.
I'm working on it.
Okay. I'll, I'll start talking, and we'll see where we get from there. As mentioned, we're looking at a five-story, 150-unit, 31,281-square-foot apartment building. The, the supervisors may recall that we've obviously been in front of you a number of times on the project overall, through the approval of the hospital, which is now near completion, the sheets, the enterprise project to the north. All of these have been phases of Brookside, and this is yet again Phase Five, another phase that we're moving ahead with. Basically, we're looking at a situation where the apartment building is located in the same location that we showed during the preliminary and final plans of the overall project. I'm merely before you today to talk through some of the details of that as far as the configuration of the building, parking, access and utilities, and just to kind of walk you through where we are right now with it as, as we, as we advance the plan. I'll show on the plan here first, just to orient everyone. Again, Harrisburg Pike to the south, State Road by six, part of the plan, the hospital under construction nearing completion, sheets in this location. And what we're talking about is Phase Five right here, which is the apartment building in this location with the associate parking and access drive. So that's where the location, again, as per even the master plan, we'd always showed it to be in this location. So we're continuing through with the process. I don't know if there's the enlarged plan, but I can sort of start with this one to talk a little bit about it. The project itself, as far as vehicular circulation, is relatively straightforward. We have a plan here where we have, have the access drive A, which is what is called in the plan, connecting from where sheets is, is currently built, over to the building itself and the parking, which wraps around both the northwest and east portions of the building in this location. The parking is in sort of two, two levels here. The lower level, let's see if we can enlarge me. The lower level in this location really enters into the first floor of the apartment buildings. We actually have an access drive A that continues. See if we can enlarge. That's a little better. Second pay, second level of parking, our second tier, it's tiered parking, which comes up to the upper second level in this location and enters on the second level for the apartments. So we have two levels of parking, sort of tiered, accessing the apartment building. We've worked with the emergency staff. I know Diane, we had meant previously to look through this, make sure that all circulation for emergency vehicles can work throughout both parking, upper and lower parking areas. In addition, we've also included an emergency fire lane along the eastern part of the building with a turnaround, as shown there, to make sure that your emergency vehicles and fire trucks can access the building around both sides of it for this purpose. So we're making sure safety is paramount. Looking at a couple of other things on the plan. Is utilities, utilities are water, gas, sewer, and electric all coming into the plan via the access, the construction from the end of sheets through to the building, this, this location. We've worked through the permitting for most all those right now. I think the one item of note is the waiver, waiver for the planning module or the exemption, which I believe we're working back and forth with your staff right now for final signatures on that. But as through the earlier phases, we are, we have most of that wrapped up at this point. Stormwater for the facility. You may recall as part of the overall land development plan, this entire project for the hospital in Brookside was subject to the legacy sediment and stormwater or stream restoration and repair and improvement plan, which was approved through DEP and the Army Corps. We have, obviously, during the hospital phase, implemented that first phase of that, which is from State Road, say, west. This plan here would be in things, what we call Phase Two, which is the area to the east here, which is going to be, which was previously approved. And we're going to be constructing that in conjunction with this phase. We do have that work into DEP and the Army Corps currently for review, mainly as a minor modification, because the building changed configuration a little bit, and a couple of the outflows have adjusted. So obviously, every time we have a change of that, we obviously review it with them to make sure everything's fine. So that's currently in review with those agencies. Lighting, the entire parking lot and sidewalk areas will be lit as per your township requirements. I'm only in the note, the only areas that we have not lit is the riparian sort of path or park, walkway. I'm only in the note, the only areas that we have not lit is the riparian sort of path or park walkway, which extends along the entire stream area, areas where it diverges from the main drives, we purposely not let those, we're looking at those to be more of a daytime use, not to have nighttime activities going down towards the stream, especially long-term with the path, as it's, it's intended to eventually go, you know, go to the property boundary and tie into a future development going east along Swarren Run, but we don't know when that's going to happen, and I don't think it's, it's a safety issue to allow people to go down to a dead end right now, especially during evening hours. So the intent is, I mean, daytime use on the pass, however, all walkways and parking that's surrounded the building, and as has on previous phases are lit to your township specifications, so we have that accommodated. Pedestrian access, as mentioned, is, is, as we've always shown in the master plan, throughout the whole plan, we have showing the walkways, both the riparian path, but walkways in and around the entire apartment area, and tying into the paths as they will tie into the future phases as they develop here. So we're, again, continuing to make sure there's a strong pedestrian link throughout the Brookside development as we had always shown from the beginning. So, those are some overviews of the plan. Just a few other things we did, as far as the review letter from David Miller Associates have two waivers to discuss for you tonight. One of those is section two sixty-five dash eight point five point D point one, and that's a deferral, the requirement to provide two access points to land developments that generate more than a hundred daily trips. The main reason for this modification is we are talking about an overall phased project. As you've seen for the overall master plan, we have multiple connections throughout the development, but we're phasing it, we're walking through the step, and for this phase here, we have this connection coming in and looping around for the apartments right now. And the deferral really goes to the fact that we will have a second phase actually coming on, our second access point coming online very soon. Currently in the township review is what we call Phase Three, which is this development here, commercial development, which would include a connection of access drive B from here all the way up to Harris Pike. So as you see, we're, we're moving through these phases. We're actively building these additional connections in. Subsequent phases, that'll be a long phase, you know, along in the front here, Phase Four, will again have, if you remember from the master plan, have additional connections even more so. So they're part of the phase, but we're working through the process right now.
Can you show us where that secondary access is for this phase?
For this phase?
For the apartments. Initially, there's only one access, as I see it.
Point, that's why it's deferral, is that right now we have this access, but under land development review is this connection right here. So it's really literally a month behind review process of this plan.
But that doesn't go to the site of where the apartments are. It intersects the driveway, I see that.
Goes to the apartment, the driveway, yes.
It's not a dual access.
Well, we were working with it to make sure we had four accesses on this, to this point. The two access points from here, and as it said, we have multiple access points coming in during future phases as they come in line, which we're working on also. We've worked through your, your township staff to make sure that, you know, all circulation was afforded, and the deferral was really to allow the opportunity for that connection to come in.
And I think the primary concern regarding the dual access is that there's a problem maybe with that.
Claudia, I think you just shut that mic off. It looks red from here. If you press the power button one more time, it should turn green, and then that will work. Right under where your finger is, there's a little, yep, right there, should be a.
May we expect that to be online at the completion of the apartments? Or are we going to have an initial occupancy with only one access? Is that your proposal?
The schedule for construction, they're going to be in lockstep, I mean, they're going to be happening kind of at the same time. I don't know the specific dates of when they'll both be complete. The apartment building obviously is a longer timeline for construction, because it's a bigger building than this small retail pads. I don't know if we define specifically the exact date when each would be done, mainly with the retail pads yet. But I would suspect they're going to be very, very close to each other as far as timelines.
How wide is the access drive that will be continued from Sheets up to the apartments? How wide is that?
It's township standards, I think that's twenty-eight or a little wider, I believe. It's, it's to your township standards as far as an access drive.
Okay.
Yes.
Eric, can you use the mic for Zoom, please?
Construct the apartments, we're going to be establishing the construction entrance off of Harrisburg, which will maintain as a construction entrance to the bounds of the site. So if necessary, it can be established as an emergency, an entrance for emergency vehicles.
I heard him.
Yeah. And that's, and that's the entrance that you're showing, correct?
No, it's not on there.
The paved access point for this project would be off of State Road at the signalized intersection. What I'm saying is to not interrupt all the other phases. Logistically, we're establishing the construction interest off, entrance off of Harrisburg that will service the construction entrance for the balance of the site. So if an entrance for emergency vehicles is a concern, that certainly can be used.
Is that closer to the residential unit that's at the end?
Right, Eric.
Yes.
In this direction. So basically off of Harrisburg Pike here, going to the right would be the construction entrance.
Because initially, we're using it to build the apartment, so it will service the apartment project.
But eventually, it'll be a full road through there or something.
Right in, right out, paved access, yes.
And might it have a turn towards the apartment, or have you decided on that?
Yes, it will, yeah.
Oh, it will? Well, that, that will.
It will intersect the access drive to go to the apartments.
My question was, will there be a westbound access to the apartments other than State Road?
We will. Thank, can we pull up the phasing plan again, if that's possible? Because I think that'll illustrate the fact that the future plan does show direct access coming from the Harrisburg, from Harrisburg Pike, turning right and going directly towards the apartments as part of the overall plan.
Thank you, that's what I was getting at.
Yes, yeah, me too.
On that page.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's your concern too, right?
I don't know, it shows it on this plan, Joel.
We've talked about it all the time.
It's the earlier plan. Yeah. So, there's going to be both this access drive here, but future development here is going to allow connections through, from, from access drive B to access drive A. It hasn't been finalized yet because that has to be designed part of the overall portion there, but the full intent is to have that connection.
I get it, okay.
Any other questions?
If, if you, it's time, yes. So, there's a statement in the review about park and open space requirements. Is there a plan for that?
Yes.
Yes, I can speak to that. We're still discussing that with the township engineer and in the process of determining what the fee will be. So that will likely be back before this board at a future meeting, probably at the same time as you would take action on the developers agreement. But for the time being, that, that's one of the comments in the review letter that we need to satisfy and address. That would be a condition of plan approval.
No specific site though, at this time?
Anything else?
No.
I do have one other modification else we included as part of the plan, if you want me to go over that briefly.
Yes.
It's a pretty straightforward one. We obviously, as mentioned before, believe this pedestrian circulation is paramount on the plan, and one of the modifications we have is really to basically, your current ordinance talks about planting in all parking islands, and there's one location where we have a pedestrian circulation coming from the walkways towards the front door of the apartment where we're proposing instead of planting in that island, for that island to be a pedestrian walkway area. Pedestrians through the parking lot in a safe manner. So that one location, we're asking for a modification, not to put the trees in that location, but again, we can put them elsewhere if you want.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
No.
Well, if the board wants to see, I do have a paper copy of the master plan, if that's helped you to at least see future intent of the connections. I know we don't have it up on the screen.
That might be helpful, sure. On the, on the rec and open space, are you proposing a fee in lieu of, or? Have you, have you proposed that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Weaver, anything?
Uh, no.
This way, yes.
Yeah, it's better than.
Well, this is State Road.
Right.
Anything else?
I believe that's all we have at this time. If you have any more questions, we're happy to entertain them. Answer any questions you have.
Okay, so I think the board is good. Is there any questions from the audience? So we'll go first row.
Stan Porter, I've had discussions with Alex Rohrbaugh from Lancaster County Planning Commission. I'm bringing attention to your East Hemphill Township official map, parks, trails, and open spaces. If you take a look at this plan, the question is where are the trails rather than just pathways? If you take, also, take a look at the recent development at the hospital, you'll see that there's poor signage, it does not designate the trail, it does not designate it as rest areas, and even though you have included and accepted a East Hemphill map showing the trail, it is poorly delineated, poorly supported, and is not adequately being addressed for community needs. Again, I bring your attention to the twenty forty regional plan, as well as the prior plan of smart transportation, smart growth in twenty-ten, indicating the need for trails for both bicyclists and pedestrians. How is that being addressed?
Our standpoint, we've shown along pedestrian, or trails running along the extent of Swarren Run and throughout the campus for the hospital. First that I've heard that they're not sufficient to meet. I know that as we show you in this plan, we're showing a continuation of the pedestrian and paths all the way through the site to the eastern poundery of the site. So we're intending, as we see in this plan, to have ample pedestrian sidewalks and walkways, as we have trails also on, around the hospital. I was unaware there were any issues otherwise.
The trails are supposed to support bicycles. In addition, the twenty forty public draft indicates the need for increased trail access. When you have, they specifically say increased park access for one thousand people. I don't see how that's being addressed. Where have you specifically placed park access with this development? Additional park area, I'm sorry, besides access.
So we're proposing a fee in debt, in lieu of dedication of park and rec land. The township's ordinance allows for that, it allows for a developer, if there's not ample space on the property, to, to put a park or public park to pay a fee to be used by the township to acquire parkland elsewhere or to develop its existing park facilities, and that's what's being proposed in this project.
How about? It's nice to see you, Mr. Porter. Appreciate your, your interest in, in the, in the trails and bike paths in, in the township. I, I would say that you have a, you have a board that's very interested in developing a comprehensive plan on, on both of those issues, bikes and walking paths. We're, we're in the development process, we're in the development process right now, okay? If, if things need to be marked better, if the community needs more information in terms of what we have, how to use it, what the connect, what the connections are between the paths, you know, we're willing to see that, that that happens. Generally, I think we've done a good job with paths, maybe not at this point addressing the bicycles, but we, we, I believe we've done a lot, okay? And that doesn't, and we'll do more, but we'll need some, we'll probably need some help to do, to do more, and we'd appreciate it if you would do that, help us. Give us some, give us some ideas of your thinking. You have a board, and you also have a developer that I believe is, is committed to the community and community access. So, we're open to everything that you have to say.
I was just going to add, when I, under the Places twenty forty commentary, what I'm seeing is that the reviewer is listing what Places says, and then the sentence that follows it appears to indicate that it has been met. I don't really see any adversarial wording in that review. So I think it's, it sounds like LCPC is basically saying, yeah, I think we're good with it. That's how I read it. Maybe I'm misunderstanding, but. And then there's some comments after that, which are really only advisory, but they seem common sense, so would you be willing to also address those? There's lighting, I don't know about the lighting part of it, but, I mean, in general. Is there anything there that, that you wouldn't be able to meet?
Yeah, I don't have that specific letter in front of me, and we have it, but I don't have it on my table right here. I don't know which ones.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You know, with the lighting, like it's mentioned, we make, we weren't shooting lighting across the whole area per township standards, with the exception of some of the.
Providing bicycle parking. I mean, honestly, those are advisory comments, so it's, it's not really, unless our township engineer wants to include them in, in their review, then I would say. Just consider it.
I know both the hospital and Sheets and this development are all including bicycle racks or accommodations for bicycles on all ages of developments. As we move through the processes with these, it's been a concerted effort to make sure that that's allowed as another means of, of, you know, access and circulation on, on the plan.
You did receive a recommendation from Lancaster County Planning Commission, correct? Yes, I thought so.
But I request that the developer ensure that there is adequate signage and direction to indicate that this is a bicycle path as well as a trail, so that people who are going to the hospital and people who may be otherwise on the path are made, are able to proceed in a safe fashion, and also that there's adequate places for people to stop, and that they go ahead and place benches along these areas as well.
I think we've heard your comments, Mr. Porter. There is somebody else in the back, I think, that wanted to speak. Please come forward.
JT Clevenger, Harrisburg Pike. I don't recognize this thing anymore from what it was originally. What is the apartment building now? Is it still an old folks care facility, or is it a straight apartment?
It's an apartment.
See, that's changed from the original. I guess you guys know that. Happened while I was gone, I guess, because it was originally going to be, there was not going to be any residents in there. We weren't going to have that traffic. So now it's a straight apartment, and it's five stories high, thanks to going from forty-five to sixty. We're going to have extra traffic there we weren't planning on having on the original face. Is there still going to be three medical buildings in there?
It's undetermined at this time, but we're still working through that process.
Put a, put a plan out, get everybody to approve it, and then put in there what you want, right? Richmond Square, that's what it's going to be. That's what Mr. O'Neil said to begin with, he was going to put in there, and that's what it's going to be. Originally, it was a Sheets, three medical buildings, and a care facility, that some people thought that Oak Leaf Manor was going to run. Now it's an apartment. So, things have really changed in two years, and you all just keep going with the flow, whatever they want. Doesn't matter what the residents are doing, but you all just go whatever with Mr. O'Neil wants, I know. I got a question on the one parking lot that's backed right up to Harrisburg Pike. Is there no room between there or the Pike? Is there no room between there or the Pike Harley at all? You can't even walk by there or do you not?
Are you referring to?
I'm up here. I can't, yeah.
No, the intent for people to be parking there for the residents to actually walk the other direction towards the apartment.
Yeah, but I meant anybody coming down the road.
Well, there's, there's a.
Yeah, I know. I live right here.
Yeah, so we would not be having a lot of part, a lot of walk, walking down.
Well, people walk from here to there. They're not all gonna wanna go down, but Swarren. I mean, you're all just crowded and everything's so tight. There's no room in any of it.
Well, the intent we've always had is to make sure that the park, the ability for the walking trails, a lot of people to walk along the stream and not allow them to visit Harrisburg Pike.
Right, but what if people don't wanna walk down the Sheets? They wanna walk straight up the road like most of them do?
Well, I mean.
No walk.
Mr. Clevenger, I tell you what, why don't you address the board and make your comments to us? I don't want there to be back and forth.
But, but you understand what I'm talking about with the, the parking lot. There's no, there's no pathway or anything right along Harrisburg Pike.
I, that, that has not changed. We did discuss that in detail from the very beginning and we went back and forth with the developer on how best to bring pedestrian traffic into the site. And with the grade, I think this was the best plan that they came up with and I think we were all in agreement at the time that this is how we would bring pedestrian traffic into the site.
So if anybody coming up on a bicycle still that wants to go just out Harrisburg Pike, straight on up to Lanusville, you're expecting them to go down along the creek and come back up State Road and then go, or what?
If they're on a bicycle, I would assume they would not. I'm, I'm assuming they would stand. If they're walking, it depends on which way they want, but to safely do so with the grade, no.
Well, the grade is, it just goes down. I mean, it wouldn't take much to fill that grade to put a walk in along there. They just don't wanna take the space. That's all.
Do we have any other questions, Mrs. Jacobson?
And Tuesday, you and I chat before it's drive. Yeah, for some reason embedded in my brain was a land swap with Penn State and Oakleaf. And then we're gonna build units over there for the residents. And I missed, I missed meetings, health reasons, but I'm doing good. But where did this come from? Is it, is it just apartments? Is that, is that what it is? Just apartments, not 55 and older, or? Is that what it is?
So can you answer that question?
Never had a commitment on, on scene, that wasn't an option. But we always had, we always had apartments located here, even from the very management. Yes, we did. I am fine with that, but that's what we had on the plan. In addition, we've had the Sheets. We've had medical office buildings and we've had some commercial. All those are still part of the plan.
Okay, so there's no egress on Harrisburg Pike from the apartments. Is that correct? Is that correct? No, you cannot enter or exit on Harrisburg Pike into those apartments.
Not, not directly, as it's shown.
Right, not directly. Only through the access road.
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay, what's in phase five and three now? I mean, I, I, since I missed the other, the apartments, what did I miss on that?
As may, as mentioned in phase three, as we had always shown, that's going to be a commercial development at this point. And phase four, that area there is medical office of some level, but obviously that needs to be designed and looked at in thorough detail. We're not at that stage yet.
Okay, so where are the apartments then?
Apartments are right there. Which is where we've always showed.
Just in that, just in that circle?
That area right there with the associated.
Okay. So what are the lines for? Is that parking, the lines?
Which lines are you referring to?
Right next to the, here.
Yeah, those, that's exactly. You see, that is right here. And that's the parking, and that's the parking booth for the apartments. Yes, exactly. So that, the parking areas are specifically for the apartment buildings.
Alright, so then phase three and, and the phase five is gonna be commercial building?
No, I mean, phase three is gonna be a commercial building, which is under review with the township currently. And what we call phase four, which is those areas in there, has been proposed as medical office, but again, we are not through the design process yet. There are details of that at this time, so we're not advancing.
What about the ones passed, passed up?
Well, I'll show you in the plan for, I'll go on this, I mean, for the supervisors, I'm pointing, see where I'm pointing hopefully. This is, was always shown as phase six, which is in the enterprise zone. And that's a distribution facility. That's already condition approved. And then part of phase five, which I mentioned earlier, really is the stream restoration plan, which has always been proposed and is gonna be built as part of this, of the apartment project. That is all part of phase five and is going to be constructed at the same time. And there is the walking trail, as mentioned, as we had proposed, running along the length of the east, tie in from this point and tie into Harrisburg Pike. Which again, was on our master plan.
Where's the bank that we recently approved? The bank?
Oh, well, we're looking at that area there. It's not approved, but it's in, under review right now.
Okay.
Isn't there supposed to be a restaurant too there?
But we were looking several options for that. We never defined specifically the commercial use because it depends on a lot of issues, but it's under review right now.
How big are those apartments? Is it five stories of five different apartments?
It's 150 units, five stories.
Any other questions or comments from the audience? Any other discussion among the board? Anything else from the applicant?
Nothing from us.
Okay. Alright gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
So Chair, I'll make a motion to approve way request number one and number two with conditions subject to all staff engineering comments.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, seconded by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Okay. Final land development plan. Is there a motion to approve the final land development plan for Brookside Phase Five Apartments Township File 19-01.12, subject to all staff and engineering comments? The motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Up next on our agenda, we have upward broadband.
Well, good evening. My name is Tim Beiler. Address is 3105 East Lincoln Highway in Paradise. I am a co-founder and co-owner of Upward Broadband. Ben Momosai, who's passing out the papers now, will be doing the main presentation. But I wanted to say thanks for the opportunity to present tonight. Thanks for your consideration. As Ben will provide in more detail, we have submitted a proposal to Lancaster County under their request for proposals for spending of their American Rescue Plan Act funds. So with that, Ben?
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, everyone, for having us. So we are upward broadband. We are a fixed wireless internet company. We're family owned. And we are, have been in business since about 2019, operating in the Lancaster County area. Since then, we have expanded some out into the Huntington region as well. And we are now providing service to over 1,000 different households and businesses in an additional five counties, Chester, Franklin, Fulton, Huntington, Mifflin, and then of course Lancaster. So we are committed to providing frustration-free and gimmick-free internet options to families and businesses. We understand the importance of providing personal, local, customer and technical support. We proactively seek to create, creative solutions to meet our customers' unique needs. So what that means to our customers is that they are working with a local and an experienced company focused on doing the right things, helping to close the digital divide. We are excited to build long-term relationships as we explore how upward broadband can help benefit the community. This spring, Lancaster County opened the application process for the American Rescue Plan Act dollars, or ARPA dollars. And they, part of that is in central infrastructure projects, which we would fall under. So we've submitted an application to Lancaster County to help build out high-quality internet throughout the county. And Lancaster County has requested that there are, is community buy-in from the townships. They want to know that these projects that they would be funding are meeting needs that the communities need. Broadband has been recognized as an essential infrastructure, just like water and electricity. So we believe that our project does indeed benefit the community. And we would propose to fit equipment up on 22 existing towers. Total project cost would be around 2.8 million. Of that, we would be doing a cost share of 20% or 564,000. In East Hemphill, about half of the households lack reliable internet, according to speed studies. And our proposed network will reach just about 75% of the households in East Hemphill. So our request to the board is that a letter of commitment would be sent to Lancaster County providing either a fixed dollar amount or at least a minimum and maximum range that you would be willing to contribute to this project. Of course, if we are not awarded, you would not have to pay out any funds that would be contingent upon an award to upward. We operate a fixed wireless internet service company. What that means is that we generally will have fiber to a tower. And then from that tower, we use microwave backhaul to link up other, other towers. And then also radio technology to get help to our customers. Typically, those customers are within about 10 miles of our tower. Does give us a good amount of range, provided we have line of sight. And provides a good low-cost option to be able to get people the internet that they need. Do have multiple plans. And one thing that we focus a lot on is the quality of experience that we offer to our customers. So we utilize different technology that helps to allow traffic to flow more freely. For example, rather than just saying increase your, your plan speed, we will install technology at our tower sites that helps to manage the, the data that's flowing through there. So for instance, if you're trying to do a voice call like a Zoom meeting and your child is trying to download the new patch for Call of Duty, it will prioritize the voice and then slow down that automatic, that download automatically so that it gives priority to the one that is more essential for that. For our customers, that's fast and reliable internet. We have unlimited data, no-term commitments, transparent pricing, no gimmicks, quick and easy installation by our technicians. A good range of affordable residential and business plans. They receive the support. They can talk to a staff member. You will almost always get a, a human on the other end of the phone. That's gonna help you decide on the best plan that you need. And we are locally owned and operated. We generally can build our infrastructure fairly quickly. Typically within, within a year, we can get a tower live. Low cost hooked up to the customer. Good technology. The wireless industry is expanding all the time. New technology coming out. And then we can utilize that as it comes in. We're committed to being a long-term partner to the communities that we serve. Upward is and has been awarded several large projects. We did receive 15 million out of the 22 million of the NTIA funds that were awarded to Huntington County. And we are working on that project. Now, that will allow us to construct approximately 20 towers and give access to about 7,500 homes and businesses in the Bedford, Franklin, Fulton, Huntington, Mifflin, Perry, and Juniata counties. We were also awarded 1.4 million from Allegheny Broadband to help provide service to about 950 households in Huntington County that we are working on now. And then the last page on there is a sample support letter that you could send out to the county if you were so inclined. We had provided some answers to some questions. Would you like me to run through those now or did you?
Go ahead and run through.
Okay, so first question we received was you've only been in business since 2019. Do you have references? The answer is yes. If you'd be interested, we could try and facilitate conversations. So that could be from commissioners in other counties or even customers may be willing to talk to as well. We also currently have a 4.9 out of 5 rating on Google with 140 reviews. You requested a map of our coverage area, which we did send to you. And then expanded, where is the expanded area in Lancaster County? So the coverage covers almost all of the county. There will be a small area kind of near Lancaster City in the, in the central part of the county that we would not have much coverage into. And then also the upper northwestern corner would not have. But we, we do have access into all but two municipalities in the county. Not full coverage in all of them, but, but at least some covered into them. Exactly what is the ask from the county and specifically what will our residents gain and how is that measured in terms of project cost? So the ask to the county, from the county, I'm sorry, is that you provide some matching funds, a letter of support and commitment to this project. They would like to see the municipalities buying into these, these proposals, help stretch the ARPA dollars that they received. So that's what we're asking for is a, a letter of commitment. Project impact.
So can we, just, I just wanna be clear on that point. Are you asking for matching funds from our township?
We are asking for you to provide a letter with, with a commitment of funds to Lancaster County. Write it on our, on our award of the.
Okay.
Awarded that project, yes.
Thank you.
Yep. The project impact said it caused your staff to pause. You find it hard to believe the numbers that we are stating in the paragraph and further explanation will be needed. So there are multiple different federal speed tests that are out there. So there's 477, which does generally provide a pretty good view of, of East Hemphill. It makes it look like it's pretty well-covered. One of the other ones that we utilize is UCLA. The way that that difference is, if you were to run a speed test on your phone, most likely will be powered by UCLA. And what that's gonna do is that's going to run a speed test. So you may get a provider who says we can offer this speed into the census block. So long as one home in that census block is covered, they list the whole census block as covered. Where the UCLA comes in, if somebody runs a speed test and it says, wait a second, we don't, we aren't getting these speeds. So this is the speed that's been advertised, but we are not receiving that. So when you look at that, then East Hemphill actually does not look as good with the coverage that is on there, based on the UCLA data. Next comment was that 314,000 is a large ask. And it's not going to happen. Getting a support letter from the board is feasible, but probably not that full amount. So we would request, we would still request funds. But we are not going to stipulate an amount. We would ask for the 314, but any amount is, is better than none, as well as a letter of commitment. And then attached is the sample letter, which is the next question. Then an additional question came up, aspect of competition. Would we be direct or indirect competition for other services such as Windstream or Chantel? The answer is that we would be a competitor as an ISP. However, as of June 15th, no other broadband had submitted a proposal to Lancaster County. So there's, there's not another company seeking those funds at this point. Even if there were, they would not be building out the same way that we do. So you would not get an identical build out. It would not be like we're just, both just completely overlapping coverage. We would be reaching different areas, different customers. We would be reaching different areas, different customers.
Are you, are you a for profit business?
Yes, we are.
Okay, are you incorporated?
Yeah, we're a limited liability corporation.
LLC, okay, and where was your business established, where was it established?
Paradise, Pennsylvania.
In Paradise, okay, and then. So again, just, just to be clear in my head here. You're requesting a letter of support from us for three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars of. ARPA funding available from the county.
For the county, the county, we are asking them to provide funds. What we are asking the municipalities to do, what they have asked us to do is to visit various townships and municipalities. And ask them to contribute funds to this to stretch the ARPA dollars that the county has received. So, based off of the record of the ARPA dollars that we received in this township. And the number of households that we impact based on the county. That is how we determine the number that, and the ask for East Hemphill.
Well, I guess you can't receive if you don't ask. Have you received any commitment from any other township in Lancaster County for funding?
We have not received a. Full commitment yet, there are several that are voting on it, there are some that have verbally told us that they will give us some money, yes.
Have you received any? Letter of support yet from any township in Lancaster County?
They are working on that, we do have verbal commitments that we will be getting that, yes.
Please explain the map.
Yeah. So those are, that map shows our coverage. So basically at the epicenter of each of the circles would be a tower that broadcasts radio signal out. That coverage map basically shows the, the distance of the signal. It does not take into account yet obstructions such as trees, structures. So we do need line of sight from our towers. In order to provide the service.
And East Hemphill Township is not in that coverage.
Correct, this is our current coverage. And then the, the coverage that we are proposing would extend our, extend our current network. To be able to reach some of the areas that we don't currently cover.
So you would send a signal from a tower to a device mounted somehow on our residence or our business. Which we would then wire to our desktop and or pick up our cell phone and receive a signal.
Correct, so it runs to a dish that's mounted on the house, and then from there, we will run a cable inside to a router. And then that router will provide you with a wifi signal. Or you could plug an ethernet cable into it to receive a wire connection.
Okay. Monthly fees? To the user?
It's the, the cost of the service. Different, differs by speed. We start around fifty dollars a month, and then there would be a six dollar router fee as well, and no stacks. Do participate in the wireless. Emergency broadband fund that does allow some government to come in and help with that for low income household.
Here's, here's sort of the rub on, on a project like this, you know, and obviously. Just speaking for myself, I wish you success in what you're trying to do. Within the township, we have two. Wireless providers in the township now that pays, pay us hundreds of thousands of dollars in communication fees. We get that money in. Here, we're being asked to contribute to a project that competes with that. And could in some way diminish the funding that we ultimately receive. So I think we would be very reticent. And again, just speaking for me, I would be very reticent as to support a project that would put those fees in jeopardy in any way. Okay.
Question on that, is that from the, like the mobile cellular carriers, is that what you're?
Well, we.
It's a cable franchise fee.
All the cable franchise fee.
Yeah, yeah.
And so that would be the wired companies providing broadband.
But we, we, we have, and I, the, the name escapes me right now, but we just, we just brought on another. ISP here in the last year.
I think, I think your ask is a, has an uphill battle, it's a for profit corporation. We're a government entity, we have. Large commitments already for big projects, Centerville Road widening is one of them. We just had a budget workshop where. You know, in a few years, we're going to have some challenging and tight times. And I. Not that there's no value here, but I, I think it's just a hard ask. And I mean, I'm not there, so I'd rather make this quick if we can, maybe we can pull the board and see.
Is my analysis correct that you would be offering a user approximately a fifty percent fee of what they're currently paying? And you somehow manage that by erecting towers and sending waves rather than running. Wires up from pole to pole and devices on poles and the cost of that kind of transmission, is that? Kind of what you're proposing, or?
I can't speak to what other providers charge, so I can't say that we are going to be fifty percent of that. What I can say is that we are not trying to prove that wireless is a better technology than cable or fiber. Everyone has its place in our belief. Fiber and cable work very well when you can run to a development or an area where you have large impact for the dollar amount. Where wireless technology really works well is when you have a more rural network. And you can put up a tower that covers a very, very large area. For, I mean, as far as to provision a tower is a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars typically depending on the site. And from that, we can serve a lot of, a lot of different customers, whereas, you know, fibers is typically about fifty thousand dollars a mile.
Looks like an FM wave that has to be able to go straight and be received.
Need to be able to, well, they are developing technology right now that. Looks, looks good on paper, where you would not have to have as much direct line of sight.
Okay.
And if I may just answer or respond to some of the concerns that you mentioned, I, I hear those concerns. As far as the competition goes. If, if UCL data is showing that the speeds aren't quite there. Then what we could help do is shore up some of the lower speeds in the, in, in your area. And help them so that now you have people who may be willing to stay. Because as you well know, people want to work from home right now. And a lot of people would be very inclined to go live in Lancaster County, which is. Decallic and rural and looks nice, you know, they have a nice view out of their front porch if they could have good internet. We supply internet to a campground in Huntington County where we have surgeons. Who just love to live out of their camper in the summer. And our internet gives them the opportunity to work from their camper. That's, that's more where I believe that there is some benefit, especially if you can increase your tax base. Time because people are more inclined to stay inside of East Hemphill.
All right, well, thank you for the presentation, did staff have any comments on this at all?
I would just say that the presentation that they provided you was based on our initial response to them, Cindy specifically was able to respond to them. And we did inform them from the start that that three hundred and fourteen thousand was a large ask and referenced back to our workshop last week. And they did answer the questions that we provided, but staff would be in agreement with all of the comments of the board.
Mr. LaFever, any further comments?
No, I'm, they say we could take this under advisement, so to speak.
Mr. Bennett.
I would welcome you guys to our community as a provider. But again, the, I'm not sure I can support that kind of money to the effort.
Mr. Russell.
I'm on the record last week when we had our budget meeting that our, our money, I think, has very limited. Uses, we have about five or six million dollars worth of infrastructure. Primarily Centerville Road project, rebuilding Centerville Road from Marriott to Columbia Avenue now to Five Lanes. And that's where I feel the ARPA money should be going.
Mr. Weaver.
I would consider a letter possibly to the county if the county chose to release some of their ARPA money. That would be up to them to decide. But I know here we have nonprofits who are looking for support. And I think I would have to support them before I would support a for profit company with any of that. So my inclination would be to not support your request.
Thank you for your time, we would obviously accept any amount and, but the letter itself would be very beneficial to us as well, so. All right, thank you for your time this evening.
So at this point, do we want to entertain? A motion to support their request? I know it seems like everybody's in agreement, no money.
I would, I would make a motion if that's your, if that's a little of the board for a letter of support, I just can't commit the ARPA monies to it, am I?
Moral support, but not financial.
And that's how the motion was crafted, anticipating that that would be your response.
Okay, so is there a motion to authorize staff to provide a letter of support to Upward Broadband indicating East Hemphill Township? Support, so this would be of county ARPA funding. Application submitted to Lancaster County by Upward Broadband.
So moved.
And again, I want to be clear, this is no commitment to East Hemphill Township. Is there a motion by Mr. Russell, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Bennett, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries five to zero, thank you. Harrisburg Pike property rezoning. Mr. Hane.
Okay, this is a follow up to a conversation we had a couple of months ago where there was a. One of the residents along Harrisburg Pike came in with their counsel to look to see if their property could be rezoned to allow them to. Continue to operate their business without having to go to the zoning hearing board. Based on feedback from the board at the time, we went ahead and prepared a map. And we, we prepared the text along with the solicitor to allow for. Those properties to be rezoned from low density residential to the community business center. With one exception, the township's property that is there would be zoned to recreation and open space. Looks like this Garber's looking for the map.
I'm trying. I think what I have though is the ordinance, not the map. Here it is, it's sideways.
So this was in an effort to bring several properties. Zoning wise into more closer compliance with what's actually happening there now than being low density.
And some of this, as a result of actions that took place, was it the two thousand fourteen?
Two thousand, yeah, it was two thousand fourteen zoning update.
Two thousand fourteen zoning update where some of these properties that were zoned for commercial.
Were downzoned.
Were downzoned unbeknownst to, to the property owner. I think before, before we advertised, I had requested last time that we made sure that we had notified. The properties that were going to be affected here, have we done?
We did that, we reached out and we had no response via email, via phone, or otherwise. Other than one question from Bender's Garage, which was satisfied simply by giving him further information on what was occurring.
So before us tonight is a motion to authorize, to advertise for the adoption consideration. Okay, so we're not approving.
Correct.
This tonight, but we're offering to advertise it at this point.
So moved.
We'll do that, are there any other comments from board members?
I just had a quick one, got my truck inspected today and Bob Bender said he's in favor of it. And he said his property was residential, I said, I thought it was a, something we made a mistake. He said he's always been residential, he's wanted for twenty five years to be commercial, so he's happy. He will be happy when it happens, assuming it does.
Do we have any questions or comments from the audience on this? Zoom, okay. So we have a motion to authorize advertising for Mr. LaFever, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Russell, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries five to zero, thank you. UGI Centerville Road widening project local service agreement. Who's running with that?
Apparently I am. So we, unless Cindy decides to jump in and talk. We have been working through the agreements required for the Centerville South. Project and the two agreements that are still outstanding are Hemphill Water Authority and UGI. And so the request is for you to. Approve signature on this local service agreement with UGI to allow that pro. Project to continue to move forward. It has been reviewed and found acceptable.
Any discussion from the board?
This is a standard agreement for a PennDOT project. And it should be within our twenty percent match. It's part of our contribution to the Centerville project, so it's a budget item.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Zoom. Is there a motion to approve signature on the local service agreement? In connection with the Centerville Road widening project.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Russell, is there a second? Second from the chair, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries five to zero. So, truck route scope of services. In the traffic commission, we've been dealing with several complaints of truck traffic, specifically north and south. Bound traffic, Centerville Road is, Centerville Road, Stony Battery Road, I think are the two biggest. Complaints that we. We have on this. Subject, part of the issue is what's the best routes for them to take, the other part of the issue is we can't do any enforcement. We currently have signage posted on Centerville Road that the police are unable to enforce because we don't have. If I understand this correctly, chief, that we don't have an engineering study that properly backs that up, the which would allow us to enforce. The truck traffic there. So there's a comprehensive scope of work. Included in our packet, what was not included was the cost, which we just determined, which is up on the screen now.
What is that, nineteen?
Sixteen thousand, six sixty three.
For all three projects?
Well, it's for the whole scope and it's, it's north, south specifically focusing on good.
Right.
Centerville, yeah.
All three streets, yes.
All three streets. I guess my question would be, is it necessary to look at all three streets? Understand, understand Centerville Road, understand Stony Battery. Is there enough truck traffic? On Good Drive to be, be looking at this at this timing? Just in an effort to maybe have it cost less.
Well, I think if we're going to say no to one of these streets, or whether we're going to say no to all of them, or yeah, I think we need to have some idea of where we're sending the traffic.
I would actually turn it over to chief on that one too, because. Good Drive was on my top of my list, but there was a reason why.
I'm sorry, what's that?
Good Drive, why, why Good Drive and the issues that you were?
Of all the north, south roads, Worce Town is obviously a state road. This would then encompass the three other major north, south roads, which is why Good was added to it.
And Good Drive is posted right now, right, correct me if I'm wrong.
It is.
But not enforceable yet?
It is.
Or is that one?
Let me just look at some notes real quick if you don't mind.
And my other thought on this is, this is a project that's going to last how long and when can we expect some results?
Several phases to go through, spending half a year at least.
I don't think he gave a time.
So to answer your question, Mr. Russell, as far as Good Drive, it currently is posted, but there's no legal basis for the restrictions at the moment. So in order for the signs to remain under the restrictions to be in play, a study would need to be done.
Part of the discussion as well as we, when we met as staff and with the Police Department Public Works was the fact that as we improve Good Drive, it will become more desirable than Roarstown Road. And ensuring that we're looking at the roadways that are ours, that we control north and south to ensure that we're being good stewards of those roadways in any way enforceable through the truck study. And in reference to your question about timing, I don't believe it's listed in the study. But I do know that when Chris Bauer was discussing the proposal with us, there was discussion about the fact that the data collection will will in and of itself take some time to ensure that we get accurate data collection and then the analysis of that data. And then also the TE 109. And Mr. Russell, maybe you know this better than I do, but it sounds like that also is a process and procedure that takes some time to work through and.
Basically creating a document that can survive a court challenge. Because when you cite a truck, it's a very expensive citation. And there's a, if you have your eyes down, your t's crossed, they will go after that because some tickets, and Chief can correct me if I'm wrong, but some tickets could be twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars depending on what the violation is. So you do have a financial incentive to try and poke holes in the case of stuff like that. So it's a very prescribed method for doing this at PennDOT.
So the traffic commission did recommend unanimously recommended that we proceed with it?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments with the board?
No, I will be abstaining.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Questions or comments from Zoom?
No.
Is there a motion to accept the proposal from McMahon Associates for truck route scoping services? Motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. LaFever. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero with one abstention. Old business, we have the MS4 quarterly report acknowledgement.
So these two items in your old business are simply just acknowledgements of receipt of the MS4 quarterly report prepared by charity at DMA and also the Little Conestoga Creek project quarterly report. Nothing really there for you to respond to or otherwise, just ensuring that you recognize that they have been provided.
Is there any comments or questions from the board on this, on these?
Nope.
Anything from the audience? Anything from Zoom?
No.
Any new business?
My, Mr. Chair, I had a matter of old business. There has been discussion about two supervisors participating in interviews for engineering consultants for the township. And I was anticipating that this would be discussed in the board in a manner like we discuss other appointments and things such as PSATs, whatever. And I was informed at our budget, beginning of the budget meeting, that this decision was already made by you for you and Mr. Weaver. Being retired, I was thinking it appropriate that I would do this, being available. And I'd like to do it. And I think this board should discuss that and make the decision as to who is going to perform this duty.
So I guess two questions. One, does the chairman have the ability to appoint members to a working group? My belief is he does gladly entertain any discussion on that.
If I go by municipal code, you are authorized to conduct meetings and sign documents. It has been accepted that annually you appoint and suggest for appointments and they're normally received. I just think this is something that the board should weigh in on. And those that have an interest should express that and then that decision is made. And I'm expressing that I have interest in doing it.
I've already appointed myself and Mr. Weaver on to this board if if the board wants to entertain overruling that, so be it. So what's your discussion? What's the will of the board? So Mr., assuming Mr. LaFever wants to do that, Mr. Bennett, what's your position?
I will just throw out there that I will not have my feathers ruffled if I am not on that that group or.
Well, I specifically wanted an engineer on that particular group because we're interviewing engineers. Mr. Russell's unavailable to serve, so that was my reasoning for picking Mr. Weaver. And I myself wanted to serve on it as chairman.
Well, then three of us wanted to serve on it, or well, actually, Mr. Weaver didn't. But I am not a professional engineer. I have a lot of experience. I think I have appropriate experience to listen to interviews and weigh what is offered by applicants.
So I'm looking at this kind of like when we made a record, we're not going to pick the engineer, the board will pick the engineer. Just like when we interviewed engineers for the police expansion. It was public safety that did that. So I
Recommendation, understood.
It wasn't decided by the board at that time. It went through public safety and was done. And that's how this was handled with the township manager and myself. But again, if the board wants to change that or overrule that decision that I made, we can entertain that discussion here tonight.
If I can, I can understand Mr. LaFever's position. I know, I've known from the beginning on this that he's been interested in this committee or in this appointment. I would support him being on the committee, but I don't not going to vote to override your decision.
Mr. Russell, I think you have to abstain from this discussion.
I'm having a discussion.
Mr. Weaver?
I can just add that I did work as an assistant county engineer and was involved in bid processes, so not extensively, but that's basically what we're doing here is a is a bid process or in some ways. So I feel that I do have the ability, but again, I'm not, I'm not, I got enough to do with my own business, so I, if I don't have one more commitment, I'm fine with that. But I'm willing to do it.
Okay, so is Mr. Bennett, is that, you're happy leaving it like it is or didn't quite?
I guess I would take it to the next step. I mean, if if Mr. Weaver, I mean, it doesn't sound like he's a hundred percent committed to it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I will volunteer if asked, which I have, I if asked to volunteer, I will if I feel that I can can be of help. And I do feel that I can be, so that's why I said yes.
Let's, let's, I'd suggest we, we, we move on. That's my recommendation. I recommend that we move on.
So that we're going to move forward with myself and Mr. Weaver as previously decided.
The board has discussed it, which was my request, and so, so be it.
Yeah. Up next, traffic commission report. Traffic commission, we discussed Lidl, some of the issues that we've had there. Shank Road, school lane, alley, there's consideration of closure at Mayor. So that should be on the board's radar because if we end up doing that, there's obviously going to be some pushback from the residents. So we're proceeding slowly, going to notify the residents of the discussion on that.
Just a question was the, because I have been involved with those discussions. It was driven by a couple of the Roarstown residents to close it or is that us kind of making a conclusion at this point?
So there was a speeding complaint and also a driving, it's a one-way street, so driving the wrong way on the one-way street. And Chief, if you could just expand on what you found?
Sure. When we did a traffic study, had our counters out for a week, we had fifty vehicles that were recorded driving the wrong way on, on the alley, which is a very, very narrow structure road with multiple alley cross streets within it. Fifty cars are going to be hard for us over a week's period of time to be able to get out there at the exact time when this is occurring because we don't know that in order to actually solve the, the problem of the one-way once and for all would be it's two houses that are more or less impacted. You're going to pull up the map, Ms. Garber, thanks. Between Mayor and Front Street, that would be impacted by this, but closing it off would absolutely eliminate the alley being used as a through-cut street by people that aren't living in Roarstown itself. If that's not, not done and not yielded or wanted by the residents, then I'm not real sure. Although there may be some increased signage or new signs being placed that the we're going to be able to make a huge impact on the fifty cars that are using it probably regularly against the flow of traffic.
So it is an issue. It's one that's going to be hard to enforce or to change by enforcement. So I think probably what the path that we have decided to go forward with informing the residents and trying to take their temperature is the way to go and doing it slowly and methodically, so it's not a surprise.
Just for the board's information, many of the staff drove through there. Perry, Cindy and I, along with Chief and other officers, all looked at other options, including speed humps, additional stop signs and all of those things. There just is nowhere on that alley that any of those things are really feasible. The intersections are close and tight and already have significant signage with one-ways and stop signs. And with the alley side parking and sidewalks and accesses in and out of the residents and businesses, there is no feasible place for any type of speed hump or speed bump or otherwise. And so it really in the end came down to there are very, very few options and the chief's option stood out to everyone as the best potential. Again, if, if that's what the residents want to do and if that's what the board desires.
In addition, there were several traffic studies that we had talked about as well. There's one I just want to bring to the board's attention, the nine-hundred block of Nestle Road. It's a twenty-five mile an hour zone. The average speed is thirty-five miles an hour. The eighty-fifth percentile is forty miles per hour on that road and it's enforceable violations of forty-five percent. Of all the studies that we have done recently, this is one that does stick out as an issue. Just to bring that to your attention. All right. Managers' report.
You should have Cindy's manager's report. I can go through it item by item or if there are items you have questions on, it's up to you. It is two full pages of items, so whatever the board would like.
Does the board have any questions about the manager's report? One thing that I would highlight to the public, the lead date for the Son of a Road South project, September fifteenth.
Correct. So with the signature on the UGI agreement, the only outstanding agreement then is that Hemphill Water Authority agreement and they're working directly with Steve Goan and Jim Ashelman to work through Mr. Ashelman's concerns on that document.
A little bit away from the manager's report. I understand that Marietta Avenue is going to be closed tomorrow.
It is, PennDOT put out notification, not tomorrow, starting on Monday.
On Monday.
PennDOT put out notification today. We actually had prior notification that it would be closed on Monday. We were not aware that it would be closed for the entire weekend, potentially longer than that. PennDOT's notification came out today indicating closure from Running Pump Road to Roarstown Road, beginning on Monday and extending through Friday, potentially longer if the project cannot be completed. And it is for emergency pipe replacement work.
Okay. We're going to put that up on the website.
It already is on the website, Facebook, Nextdoor.
So is Running Pump Road going to in essence be a detour?
Correct. Their detour is Running Pump Road to Knoll.
All that traffic's going to go through the
Traffic circle, roundabout, yes. Yes, and actually I spoke with Dave Thompson, Thomas Thompson. Either way, District Eight's PIO, who we've dealt with on other projects. And he indicated that the roundabout does not show on PennDOT's mapping system, which we were made aware of not long ago in a PennDOT meeting, so that is being updated at this time by Mr. Madonna and the process for that.
They need to check Google more often. Google Maps has it on there.
Indeed, it does.
I think it's going to be a lifesaver. And I don't mean that as a pun, but if we didn't have that, we would be in
Yes, the police department would be very busy during that week at that intersection.
It should be, it should be able to handle the traffic actually, so will be, be a good test, but it should be able to handle it.
And thankfully, school's not in session, so it shouldn't impact Roarstown Elementary. So if there's no questions on the manager's reports, then the group reports. Public Safety met on July thirteenth. We discussed some significant kudos to the police department for things that they have accomplished in our community and within the department and then also updates on staffing there. And then we had ongoing discussions about amendments to the intergovernmental agreement for the fire commission and any related changes between the borough and the fire company moving forward. So that remains an ongoing point of discussion. The Recreation Authority met on June twenty-second. It was the first of two advertised public meetings and there was not significant attendance. However, those that attended did participate and provide comment. None of those comments had any issues with the goals of the authority or more specific to the loss of green space, full utilization of the existing properties and creating another access point on Stony Battery. And what impact that might have again on pedestrians and bicyclists. Cindy attended the West Hemphill Township Supervisors Meeting to discuss the Stony Battery Road Trail and the stub road between Kaufman and Stony Battery and the closure of that for the trail. They were supportive of the concept of closing that stub and removing half the academy on their side and retaining our side of the academy as the trail. They also discussed the paving of Stony Battery Road at that meeting. And those details are provided in her report. The last group report is from the Planning Commission, which met on July thirteenth. They reviewed the draft text amendment that They reviewed the draft text amendment that was originally on the agenda for this evening. And there were members with concern, so it was tabled to allow them to discuss it further, which is why it was removed from your agenda this evening. That's all I have.
We also have Fire Services Commission meeting. It was just reporting out of working groups last night and the one area that is, we're having a discussion with is developing a LoSAP program for recruitment and retention for firefighters. And that'll be a discussion later meeting at some point. And LoSAP is a way to provide a financial incentive without incurring an immediate IRS tax hit with firefighters, kind of like a little savings plan. Okay.
Okay, and just just one other thing we touched on briefly was the fact that we have some air conditioning replacements at the Roarstown Fire Hall or building that are going to need to be replaced. We've got an initial estimate from from actually the person that installed our current system. Came in around $51,000, which we thought was a great price and a great estimate. We're going to move, try to move things down the track here in the next couple of weeks fairly quickly. I would suspect this will be a East Hemphill Township responsibility, financial responsibility. So as soon as we flesh out the details and have something in place, it'll be coming our way. Thank you.
Okay, with nothing else, we're on to public comment. Does anybody want to make a public comment about a non-agenda item? Anybody online? All right, hearing none, it is 9:12. We will adjourn our meeting. Thank you.